This meeting is being recorded.
I would like to call to order the regular city council virtual meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021. Welcome, everybody. If you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll, please, and council members, please remember to state your location?
Pratt.
I'm in the city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Bellinger.
Here, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Weiss.
Here, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Reins.
Here, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Gilroy.
Here, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Smith.
Here, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
All right, thank you, Barb. And now I'm looking for approval of the agenda as submitted unless there are changes that need to be made.
So moved, Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Mayor Gilroy.
Yes.
Item, if you look at the bottom of the agenda, that should not be seventeen, that should say fifteen.
All right, duly noted. We'll include that as a friendly amendment to the agenda. And I believe we had a motion and a second, and with that adjustment of the numbering, Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the agenda?
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, and now we have an opportunity for audience participation. Hallie, have we had anybody join us for audience participation?
We have Brandon Lanyon here, and we have Patrice here. I believe she's here for the liquor license resolution.
All right, great. Moving right along then, we have the council meeting minutes of January 11th, 2021. I'm looking for approval unless there are any changes that people might have seen.
Motion from Bellinger to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you both. Barb, will you call the roll for the council meeting minutes of January 11th, 2021?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, moving along, we have our accounts payable, and Noah, I believe you had an opportunity to review those?
Thank you, mayor, yes, I did. I also had an opportunity to reach out to Rachel and the team, and I believe I copied everybody on those questions, and Rachel did a wonderful job answering them. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve checks 73941 dated 1/4 of 2021 through check 74000 dated 1/14 2020, or 2021, and ACH items 68 through 75 in a total of $837,987.80. And I open the floor. If anybody has any questions on any particular line items, we can reach out to Corey or Rachel.
Question, second, Smith.
All right, if there's no questions regarding the accounts payable, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right. And before we move on to action items, and we have Chief's smiling face here. I could not let this council meeting go by, knowing that Chief has seven days left with the city. And so this evening, we're going to honor you with a certificate of appreciation from the council members, and I'm getting, you know, I'm gonna smile through it. But I'd like to read this, and we will get this into your hands once all the council members sign it, Chief. But our certificate of appreciation reads as follows. Whereas Robert Young, during the 11 years he has served the city of Williamson as chief of police, has significantly contributed to and assisted in creating a welcoming and supportive police department in the Williamson community. And whereas among many accomplishments, Chief Young managed the transition of the police department to an operation with six full-time officers and directed the construction and completion of the new police department building, which opened in 2015. And whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities and his working relationships were always carried out in a friendly, thoughtful, genuine, and helpful manner, earning him much respect from his peers and throughout the community. And whereas Chief Young has tendered his retirement to the city of Williamson effective February 1st, 2021, now, therefore be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Williamson expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks to Robert Young for his contributions to the community and commends him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duties as chief of police on this 25th day of January, 2021. That was my honor to read that for you, Chief. So, sorry about that, but thank you so much for all that you've done for this community.
Thank you, mayor. I was gonna do a police report then. You typically let me off and out with one, but maybe like right now. And I very much appreciate. I remember when you come in and talk to me about being a reserve.
Oh, yeah.
And it's been my pleasure to be the chief here for the last coming 11 years. It's a great way to cap. I've been a police worker for 45 years, starting with Tecumseh State Police, and being at Williamson's been my highlight. And so I've worked for three different city managers. They've all been great in their own ways. I've always felt the support of council. Well, not always, not necessarily the beginning, but now. But more importantly, the community. We have a wonderful community. This was not an easy decision for me. I love our city. I learned soon that I had to be careful what I asked for because this community is a very giving community. And so, but it's time, and it's time to move on. And you've got a great successor that's gonna take this department to higher levels, and so I appreciate that. So, thank you. I still just live a few... And so I'm not going away. I just won't be the chief anymore. So, thank you.
All right, well, we'll hear more from you later when I ask you for your final department report. But moving on now, and we'll have council member comments at the end as well. But moving on, we'll get right into our action items. And our first action item is appointment of new council member for a term to expire 11/30/2022. I open the floor to a nomination for this available seat on council.
I will nominate.
Yes. Who spoke first?
I'd say.
Go ahead, Jean.
Are you sure?
Rock, scissors, paper?
All right, well, I would like to nominate Brandon Lanyon to the appointment of new council member position with term to expire 11/30 of 2022.
All right, thank you. Do I have support for this motion?
Second, Reins.
All right, thank you. Typically with action items, we have an opportunity for discussion after a motion and support has been made. Is there any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, mayor, I do. Are either candidates on the call tonight?
Yes, we have Brandon Lanyon with us this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no discussion, Barb, I will ask for a roll call for the appointment of the new council member.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, Brandon, thank you so much for being here this evening. You know that if you've watched council meetings or been at council meetings, it does pinch my heart a little bit to know that now we have to fill a seat on planning. So typically what I do tell board members is sometimes it's up to you to find your replacement. I say that, you know, in a very friendly manner, and we always have great members from the community that step forward as you have done to fill seats in the board. So, welcome to council. We look forward to having you and being a part of our group, our seven, and the business that will carry forward in the months of having a full council is always great. So, thank you so much and welcome. Next, we have a liquor license resolution, and that is action item 8B. We had an application in our packet. I do believe we do have a representative here. I'll start out with Corey. Is there anything that you would like to, information you'd like to give council? Again, there was only an application that seemed a little bit lacking of information. So I'll open the floor to Corey.
Thank you, mayor. I do not have much to report. I believe we do have somebody present that hopefully could give us a little bit of background and answer any of council's questions.
Okay. Patrice, I believe you're here representing what I believe is Simmons Property, so I will go ahead and give the floor to you so that you can address the council.
Okay, yes, all I turned in was LGU because I wasn't sure what else you needed. What we're looking to do is, there is a recent purchase of the GLS building on 123 Cedar, right at Grand River and Cedar, and we're looking to put in a kayak place there where we would rent kayaks. So we're looking to have a little bar in there for before and after. We'll have a bus that will transport people. And we are interested in putting them in all the way down the road there, maybe to the right and cleaning up the banks there. And then we'd transport people over to Dietz Road, over to Meridian Road, and then hopefully with the opportunity to stop at places like the River House or the gym that you can get to off the river. We have the bus already. We'll be purchasing the kayaks. We just wanted to approve this in the meantime. The building just closed at the beginning of January, so it's brand new, and we're looking to clean up the area and get some kayak, kayaks going down the river and some, a little more action downtown there.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to council members for questions to Patrice. Go ahead, Tom, I see. And raise your hand so that I can call on you. So, Tom, go ahead with your questions.
So, my question regarding the GLS building for that type of a function is what's your intentions for parking? Because there is, as far as I know.
I can't hear. There you go.
There's nearly no parking at the GLS building, so I don't know what the intentions would be for that.
It would be street parking and then parking at that park there. I know there's a lot of public parking there, and that's where we're thinking customers could park.
Okay. Anybody else with questions? Raise your hand so I can call on you. Noah?
Weiss has his hand up.
Okay, Weiss too. All right, Noah, go ahead, and then Weiss will come to you.
I think this is more of a question for Corey. I thought what all our liquor licenses were used, and we didn't have any more to hand out at the present time. I don't know what the limit is for our locations, or maybe that goes back to Chief.
I'll let either of them jump in.
Noah, I'm not familiar with what the current allotment is. I think at one point in the last year, I saw that there was one available on the Liquor Control Commission website. You know, Patrice may know that right offhand. And I can also tell you that there is another form of liquor license that's called a redevelopment liquor license that is available because we have a DDA. And I have talked with a business owner about that program separately from this as an option when the rest of the liquor licenses are tapped out.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Go ahead, Patrice, and then I'm gonna ask Councilman Weiss for his question for you.
Sure. Yes, there is one available through the State Liquor Commission. It's an LGU on-premises license. That's where I came up with submitting to city council for it. I am familiar with the redevelopment license, although this was not the one I thought was available.
Okay, Councilman Weiss, your question?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions. My concerns are this, parking. We recently, within the last couple of years, have had businesses that have opened, and the parking has been the big concern. And I don't know if I'm in favor of people parking at the city parking lot or the city park for this. And also for Patrice, what would the hours of operation be? When would you be serving alcohol? If you can answer that, and would you be serving food?
The hours of operation probably be to be determined right now. Kayaking's mainly a day thing, so I would say mostly during the late hours, depending on what came out. And as far as food, we would probably have something simple like hamburgers and hot dogs for the expense of a kitchen at this time, but maybe later expand.
Okay. I do have a question for Patrice, and my concern is, is that the proximity to the church and also a school. And so that's my concern. And do you have a business plan already put together for this property with the kayak rental? Of course, I think parking, street parking is a big concern by all council members because I echo what Councilman Weiss said. We have had businesses that have opened up in residential areas, and that has been a concern, and you know, certainly we want our businesses to be residential friendly as well. So can you speak to that with your business plan, and then also the concerns of having a establishment that would be selling alcohol near a, that close to a school area?
Sure. I could put together a business plan to submit. Like I said, I wasn't given any information on what to bring tonight or what to submit before the council meeting. I kind of figured I would find that out tonight. So if the business plan is something you guys are looking for, I would be happy to submit one by the next council meeting. As far as the school and the church, liquor license, you're only allowed to serve out so far, so it would only be on the property of the building that liquor could be drank or transported. Once they hit the end of the building or the end of the patio, they wouldn't be able to take it off there.
Okay, so this would also not be alcohol that the kayakers would be able to purchase and take with them in the kayaks, correct?
Well, the liquor license, usually you have a permit for to-go beer or wine, which would mean if they wanted to purchase beer or wine to take on the river, they could purchase it, but it would stay closed until they get on the river. They couldn't drink it on the street on the way down there.
And Attorney Peron, I believe you had your hand up, and then Dan, I'll come to you.
Yes. When it comes to the proximity to a school or church, that is a state standard under the statute that generally prohibits the licensed establishment within 500 feet of the church or school. But the Liquor Control Commission can waive that standard if there is no objection raised by the school or church. And if there is an objection raised, then the Liquor Control Commission holds a hearing to resolve that objection. So that's really a state prerogative. They've preempted that issue. When it comes to local governmental unit approval, that is with regard to established policies in general as to whether or not you're going to allow them at all, which the city does allow them, and how many. And of course, the state establishes the number in general as a factor of the city's population. So if there's one available, well, then there's one available. But local approval is a requirement to get the state license. But this is primarily based on things of allowing them at all under a city policy and how many or proximity to each other, perhaps, if you have that. Because otherwise, you can't really deny a local approval for arbitrary and capricious reasons. Issues like parking and zoning and things like that are somewhat separate issues. Certainly, they're pertinent to the proposed use of the property. I think some of our members who have served on Planning Commission are aware that the parking has been reviewed again. We allow for community parking, especially in the downtown area. So that's probably not a reason to deny approval for the permit itself at this time. But certainly, that's something to be addressed when it comes to any future issues that might arise as far as land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Peron. Question?
So, because we cur, I guess I'm processing what Tim just said. Because we allow community parking in the C1 district, which this is technically the C1, we could not deny this permit based on parking? Is that, is that what I'm, would that be considered arbitrary and capricious, or?
Well, it could be, but it really doesn't go directly to the, to whether or not they should have a liquor license. This is more in the realm of land use, which is not really the issue that's before you at this time.
Okay.
Because that was one of my larger issues, especially if we're talking about for kayak trips because it's more of a longer-term stay for the parking. If you're on a three, three, four-hour kayak trip, you're not parking for a shorter period of time. And while this is in the C1 district, it's kind of an odd spot in the C1 because it's very near to downtown, but it's also encompassed on three sides by the residential, and it's a very small lot. So I, I don't know. Those are, those are my concerns. I'm assuming you would be using the boat launch there between St. Mary's School Parking Lot and McCormick Park for the kayaks. Is that, would that be your main access to the river there?
Yes.
So then most of you would probably be wanting to park in close proximity to that, would be my guess, because people are gonna want close access to the river.
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes, I do, mayor.
Okay.
And it's for Patrice. What kind of investment are you looking at to make in this business? And what I'm seeing is we have several businesses that have liquor licenses that have invested greatly in the city. And I guess I would be looking for more of an investment in the community other than just a small bar with burgers for kayakers. So can you tell us about that?
Sure. I think kayaking's become a big event now, especially with COVID. It's something people can go do outside. So this place would be primarily a stopping point for the kayaks, and the business would be more of kayaking than bar.
Patrice, I have a question for you. And I know that you weren't, you didn't bring a business plan or anything, and you didn't know that you, I mean, you know. But what is your anticipated business opening date? You said that you recently closed on the building, so what is your, what is the anticipated opening date for business? When you guys would look to be, you know, putting kayakers in the river for the first time?
Sure, that'd be dependent on the weather, but I would like to think after Memorial Day would be a good time to start.
So are you guys hoping to redo that building in between now and Memorial? And do you have the kayaks and all of your equipment, or is that something that is ongoing right now that you're putting together?
No, that's something that's ongoing right now. We don't have all the equipment. We do have some kayaks, and we do have the building cleaned up and ready to transform, but nothing's happened yet. We're just waiting on approvals.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom, and then Dan, I'll come back to you. Tom, then Dan.
So I guess one of my concerns that I'd like to ask for clarification on is if we're using that public boat launch at the end of Cedar Street there between St. Mary's Church and St. Mary's School. My concern would be there's a lot of foot traffic between the church and the school where that road, I know it's a public road, but it gets used more as a drive for the church and the school, which constantly has, you know, pre-K through five, fifth grade kids coming back and forth, as well as elderly crossing that road regularly. I'm just a little bit concerned about the idea of people, especially that have been drinking, making their way back and forth between that bar and that public boat launch on a regular basis. It might get congested there with the opportunity for a potential accident of some kind.
The people would be walking from the building down to the river, or we would be busing them out of there. So there wouldn't be a lot of people driving up and down that drive, except for parking when they first get there and then leaving.
Dan, you had a question?
So, are you discussing renting only kayaks, or are you looking at also renting tubes? I know that's very popular north, a lot of places that do. Kayaks and canoes also do the, do the tubes as well. Is that something you're looking at, or?
I think a tube would be a consideration in the future, although right now I know they've spent a lot of time working on cleaning up the river. I don't know if the river right now is conducive to getting on tubes. I think it's a little more conducive to doing kayaks because of the debris.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because the tube rentals, while a lot of fun or more, can end up being closer to booze cruises usually than a, than a nice trip down the river in the kayak. So that's why I was.
Sure. Our intention is to be kayaks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Do we have any other questions?
Jeff Weiss has his hand up, so.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
I do, and this is for Corey. Corey, is the boat launch, the kayak launch, a city property?
Yes, Jeff, the, the end of what you would call Cedar Street is a platted right-of-way. So that's a right-of-way under city control. And then within McCormick Park, you know, roughly 20, 30 feet away from that area, there's a stepped-down canoe kayak launch. Again, that's gonna be city property as well.
Okay. And I guess this is for you and Tim for council. If this is a city-owned property, what kind of liability would we incur, especially if someone's been drinking? And I think that we're, we can all point the white elephant in the room that kayaking, canoeing, tubing, when you put beer involved or alcohol, it's not a good combination. So what kind of liability would the city incur during the launch and coming out of the water?
Go ahead, Tim.
I don't see that there would be any different liability because, first of all, there's, we have governmental immunity, and there's no exception to governmental immunity for using a park. And in fact, even if it was privately owned property, there's immunity for recreational use of private property. And that's what this would primarily be. There's no public building exception or highway. And people have to assume their own risk when they're undertaking recreational activities. The liability comes in with the liquor license holder. If they were to serve somebody who was visibly intoxicated or serve someone who was underage, and an injury was caused based on that, well, then there would be liability for them, and they're required to have liability insurance as part of their liquor license. Now, maybe not a whole lot of coverage, but something.
Okay. The second question, oh, actually, I have two more. And for Patrice, what, you haven't set the hours of operation yet, but what would happen during the winter months from, say, Labor Day to Memorial Day with the business?
Labor Day to Memorial Day, it could just be a small bar operating, obviously no kayaking. We would try and find some kind of winter activity, maybe snowshoeing or something that could go on there. Uh obviously, no kayaking. We would try and find some kind of winter activity, maybe snow shoeing or something that could go on there. But again, this is all fairly new, and we're just applying for the liquor license now.
Okay. Uh and my second question, and I hate to put you on the spot, Chief, you're you're outgoing, but uh do you have any confer- concerns from a law enforcement uh perspective?
No, not as far as the licensing, because that's it used to be under the the local chief's control, but the state has changed. That's under their control. And so um he'll be like ten feet away from the police department and uh sixty some feet from Saint Mary's Church and Saint Mary's School. Those are my concerns.
Okay, thanks, Chief. And my concerns as well uh as well. And also with hours of operation, if it's meant to be a uh a kayaking uh business, I think to open up a little bar and grill uh a location like that, I um I think we're just going on a path we don't want to go down wi- without more information. And uh my my last comment is this, that you know, it's it's our duty as city council, lo- local government officials to uh vet this properly. Uh the state does what the state does. They don't know the city Williams and like we do. It's up to us to make this decision, not the state. That's all I have.
Uh Attorney Prohn, I thought I saw your hand up.
Well, certainly, you can ask for more information. I don't know if there's a real timeline on this uh application, but it has to be uh determined tonight necessarily. Um I don't think you can unduly delay it. And even after a license is issued, the city has the ability to request a a license be revoked if there's repeat violations of underage serving or other nuisance activities on the property.
Yeah, I I understand that uh Tim, but um I think we've also seen examples of uh large cities where there's quite a nuisance and violent murders and uh everything else that happens at bars and grills i- in liquor establishments that we don't necessarily want to go into. So if we have to decide tonight, we can. I'm ready to cast my vote, but it's uh I'll defer.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take one more question from uh Councilman Pratt. Then I'm going to look for either a motion uh to move this forward or um uh to table it until we have more information, but I'll go ahead and go to Councilman Pratt for his question. And then I'll open it up to Patrice and then uh and we'll move forward um when I call for a motion on it. Councilman Pratt?
Yeah, so I um I guess my question would be, if I understood Tim correctly, is that to obtain the liquor license within that feat of a school or church, that the state has to be the one um to to waive that. So I'm just wondering if maybe we've got the cart ahead of the horse, and there might be some things that need to get ordered first before we would even be justified in casting a vote on this.
Thank you, Councilman Pratt. Uh Patrice, I think you had your hand up. I'll go ahead and and uh give you a a moment for some comments before I I call uh my counsel um to move this forward.
Sure. Uh I'm not sure if anyone's aware of Rivertown Kayaks, which is in Lansing, Michigan. But there is a kayak company down there that runs kayaks and drives them to different drop offs. And they they stop at different drop offs. They themselves are not a bar, but they transport everyone, and they've had quite success. Uh people are allowed to bring alcohol on the river with them when they go through them, even though they don't sell it themselves. So I guess that's the only difference is that we be selling it. They don't. But it's brought a lot of families out, um a lot of people out on the river that have never been before. The river's been utilized more than ever before. So I think it's a good thing for the community. It is a big family thing to do.
Okay. All right. Uh yes, Tim, go ahead.
When we're talking about the uh the state reviewing the application, the this local governmental unit approval is part of the application. If they don't have that, I don't think the application moves forward to the point where then they would be seeking an objection from the church and school for resolution at the state level. So I think this thing has to happen one way or another before there's further progress at the state level.
Um my final thoughts on this would be that I I think a kayak rental would definitely be something in town um that uh would be a great business, because we do have our future future um kayak uh launch and takeout um in the old car wash location. So um while I would be excited about that, I don't know necessarily if I'm excited about having um uh the 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 liquor and and alcohol package um combined with that. And that's just my personal feeling on that. And you just said that uh Rivertown Kayak in Lansing is very successful without it. Um so at this time, I'm going to uh ask for uh counsel um if we would like to move this forward, if somebody is uh would like to bring a motion uh forward for this uh action item. Oh, Patrice, go ahead.
I have one more question. Is um the church and school approval something that you guys would like us to get to bring back to next meeting? Or how how would I go about something like that? Would that be something you guys are looking looking for?
Um I I'll go ahead and we'll um have discussion on that um after our our council uh. If I have a council member that's going to bring this forward as a motion for us to vote on or uh so I'm going to open it up to council if somebody'd like to make a motion or uh what we'd like to do with this action item.
I think I think the place she's talking about is in Lansing is very successful, and they're successful without a pub or without a bar. I think us as a council, putting a pa- a bar or pub across the street from a church and a church school would be in extremely poor taste. And the fact that it would require a state waiver just kind of speaks that much more to my mindset on it. Um.
Uh Councilman Smith, are you bringing forward a motion so that we can approve either the approval or the denial of this? Or was that just a comment that you wanted to make?
So.
And if if you don't have an answer, I uh Dan, uh Councilman Rhines has his hand up as well.
I'll put forward a motion to deny the liquor license resolution.
Okay. Do I have support for that? Motion.
I'll I'll support.
Okay, and I'll open this up to discussion before I call for a roll call vote. Uh are there any other comments that council members would like to make before I call this for a vote? No? All right. Barb, would you call the vote for the uh motion of denial for the liquor license resolution?
Gilroy.
Uh yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt. Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council members. And and Patrice, um I hope that you're able to take back our valid concerns um to the Simmons Properties LLC that's listed on this application. Um, you know, we want uh, like I said, uh me personally, I think a kayak rental location would be great because of the activity that we do have on the river. Um but I think you've er you've heard concerns from all of our council members um as to why um we don't think it would be a good idea moving forward um with uh liquor license uh application at this time. Thank you for being here. Uh, oh, you're on mute, Patrice. Yes. Yes.
I heard some people say no and some people say yes.
Uh, no, uh Barb, would you go ahead and uh give me a tally of the roll call vote, please?
Uh the the roll call votes were six that voted yes to deny the resolution.
Okay. All right. So at this time, Patrice, um we are not moving forward with this application uh for the the liquor license.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Uh moving right along now with our action items. We have an art grant resolution of support. Uh we have the a resolution in the packet. And Holly, I know that your committee worked um very hard on this. We've had success with applying for the grants. Is there anything you you'd like to add before I ask for a motion?
Um just that we're going forward with the next phase in our idea to welcome people to the downtown Williamson area um by putting welcome murals at ea- each entrance. Um and the Sun Theater has agreed to help us out with that, and that's um going to be our next project location, hopefully.
Okay.
Um they're super, super excited, and I've already got a really nice support letter from them. Um and we'll be applying for the grant by February twelfth. And I think by the end of February, we should hear something.
Great. All right. Uh do I have a council member that would like to move this motion forward for the art grant resolution of support?
Uh I'm going to make the motion to um hold on, let me get the verbiage correct. To support to apply for a public art grant through the Lansing Economic Area Partnership in conjunction with PNC Bank for Downtown mural project.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Do I have support or uh second?
Bellinger.
Okay, both. Uh I've got, yeah, be quicker, Noah. Uh we've got support from uh Bellinger and Pratt. So uh Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Uh next action item is the police chief appointment and contract. Cory, you gave us a great memo in here and gave us a lot of good information. So I'm going to turn this right over to you so you can talk about the process that you went through and and what it took to uh bring this to us tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh so this evening, I'm I'm excited. Uh it's a bittersweet moment to say goodbye to Bob, but exciting to, you know, chart our next steps uh with the police department. And so when Bob informed me back in November that he was looking to retire this year, um I I really went about talking to the the police staff, um other city staff, and I I think everybody on council um uh about the position and the opening and an attempt to just kind of hear from everybody, you know, things that they they like to see out of their their chief, uh both currently and and in the future. And what we did with that information is uh we we had an existing job description, which we updated, um and then came up with a recruitment profile uh which we advertised. And uh as the memo indicates, uh we had thirteen applications. Uh we interviewed initially eight of those applicants. And from there, it was pretty apparent that we had, you know, two that that really rose above the the rest of the candidates. Uh very strong pool. Uh it's not a knock against the candidates that we had, that we brought in. Um it was a tough decision, but we've decided to move forward with those two. And uh the the next step in the process was we had them uh complete ride-alongs with our officers. Um and then we had a a community-based interview panel, um which, you know, I I really would like to acknowledge them and thank them. We had Superintendent of Schools, Adam Spina. Um we had Bruce Weber, the DNW Store Manager and Chamber President, and uh Steve London, who is the President and COO of Beckham. Um so uh uh, you know, three just solid community leaders, um executives with a lot of hiring experience, and uh took our candidates through that process. At the end of the day, uh as you'll see in the packet, uh I'm recommending tonight uh that council confirm my appointment of James Wolfe, goes by Jim Wolfe, uh as our next chief. Uh and so the resolution would accomplish the confirmation and the approval of the employment agreement. Um if approved, Jim is slated to start on February first, uh which doubles as Bob's last day. Um so they'd have one day of overlap uh in the office and uh we we would move forward from there. So um appreciate uh, you know, all the feedback that we got from from those involved in the process and very excited to uh make this recommendation tonight.
Great. Thank you so much, Cory. And um Chief, is there anything you'd like to add before I open uh this up for council members with questions?
Yeah, just that I agree with everything Cory said. I felt honored to be asked to be part of the process. I didn't fully expect that. And it was great to see the caliber of candidates. And um I I fully support the recommendation. I think uh you call him James, you call him Jim, I call him Jimmy. I know him back from state police days. I think he is a prime candidate to take this department to the next level. And so I can't say enough positive about it.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Cory. So I'm going to open it up for council member questions. Uh do we have any hands raised? Go ahead, Gene.
So more of a of a statement. Um having spent twenty-four years in law enforcement myself, I've worked for some horrific law enforcement leaders in my in my years, right? And uh I had a sheriff ask me once, well, who should I look to promote? And I told him, you find the guy that doesn't have any stripes on his sleeve, but people still want to follow him, and that's your leader. Jim Wolfe came in, retired from the state police, and served our community briefly so far, but a- as a reserve officer. And in that capacity, I watched our certified officers, who are extremely professional officers, naturally take to him in a way that I have very rarely seen. Um and it really displayed to me that that they have embraced him as their leader already. Prior to this meeting, two of them stopped over to the house tonight to want to make sure that, you know, uh you know, you got, you you guys are going to vote for Jim, right? Like, they're excited to work for this man. And that excites me because I know that a leader the way that Jim's going to lead this department and pick up right where Bob left off, that is only going to mean great things for the citizens of Williamson and the taxpayers, only great things. So I am wholeheartedly on board with this.
Okay. Questions, comments? Any members out there? Yes, Weiss.
Yes, uh first of all, I I I'm ecstatic that we're we're hiring a, is our next chief of police a Williamson alumni. Uh that that's awesome, but uh I've known Jim uh from the state police, but going to conferences with him, he has a very impressive resume. He'll do a great job. And uh we're excited that he's on board. So I'm ready to make a motion if you are.
Yeah, I'll make a comment too um before I uh let uh Councilman Weiss do that. I can't say um or speak highly enough about how you handled this whole process, Cory. It was very, I think, organic um that you brought in outside uh influences, community members um that have a a stake in in the future of Williamson. Um you also spoke to all of us council members and got our thoughts of of uh moving forward with the new chief. And as bittersweet as it is, um I'm excited about this next chapter for Williamson, for the community, for our residents, um for the department, after, you know, serving as a reserve officer, which Chief, you know, thank you for that opportunity, because I don't come from a law enforcement background, but that's what I hope will continue as we uh end up with academy students that want to be reserves. I hope that um Chief Wolfe will foster that as well and and give um non-law enforcement um individuals an opportunity, like some of our reserve officers have been, because we wanted to serve a community and and give back. Um but I I I, like I said, Cory, um hats off. This is a a big hire, one of your first big hires as far as department goes, and I think you did a great job. Um so with that, I'll open it up. Uh I believe, Councilman Weiss, if you'd like to make that motion.
You bet. Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution to confirm the same age of the appointment of James Wolfe as chief of police and to approve a contract for employment services.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second, Smith.
Thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, then I will go ahead and ask Barb to call the roll for our next chief of police.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy. Gilroy.
Yes. And so if there's a council member out there that has not met, um, our future chief, uh, that comes in on February 1st, I would strongly encourage it. Um, and we look forward to this transition and, uh, we know that it'll be a good one. Our last action item of this evening is our janitorial services agreement. Uh, we have a memo in here as well. And so, uh, Corey, is there anything that you'd like to add in addition to the memo?
Uh, would just like to thank Barb for helping me through this process. Barb, uh, at, at a very busy time, uh, in December for, for me with, you know, this hiring process and getting Raphael, our new zoning administrator started. Uh, Barb took this from, uh, start to finish. And so I appreciate Barb's assistance on this. And, uh, you know, pleased with the outcome. Uh, you know, we, we will stick with our incumbent provider. That, that's the recommendation. Um, and, you know, not, not sustaining a significant cost increase compared to where some of the other bids were at. Um, and so if there's any questions, we're happy to answer those, uh, but the recommendation is, uh, listed in the memo.
Great. Thank you so much, Corey. Does anybody have any questions for Corey or can I look for a, uh, motion to move this forward?
I make a motion to approve an agreement with Deeds Janitorial Services, Inc. to provide janitorial service for city buildings for a term of February 1, 2021 through January 31st, 2024. Rhines.
Thank you. Do I have support for this motion?
Second, Grant.
Thank you, Tom. All right. If there's no further questions or discussion, I'll ask Barb to call the, uh, role for the janitorial services agreement.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. That concludes the action items for this evening. Moving along the agenda, we do not have any discussion items. Uh, correspondence received. We did receive the Friends of Williamson Parks Annual Report. And as you all remember, we did have, uh, Friends of Williamson Parks here for our last council meeting. Uh, they also presented to DDA, uh, their idea of gifting the city the new gazebo down near our boardwalk on that northwest, uh, corner of downtown, um, replacing the existing gazebo. So that, uh, project is moving forward. Um, we had a great, uh, meeting, uh, for DDA. Um, uh, good questions were asked and good information was received. So that will be moving forward. So now I'll move right into, uh, our department head reports. Uh, Corey, uh, would you like to elaborate on your, um, manager's report or add anything to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this will be my only opportunity to talk about Bob for a second. So really pleased with council's, uh, support tonight of the new chief. Uh, it goes without saying that saying goodbye to Bob is very, very difficult. Um, I just want council and, and any community members that are listening to know that I don't know that I've ever worked with somebody who has the respect of every group we deal with, whether it's council, whether it's his staff, the rest of the city staff, uh, business leaders, community leaders, residents, the school district. You know, Bob has really made a huge imprint on the city of Williamson. Um, it, it's, it's huge. And, uh, you know, we are going to greatly miss that. And I, I keep telling myself that that didn't happen overnight and Bob keeps telling me that. Um, and so I'm hopeful that, you know, our next chief will, will get there in time. Um, and it, it does take time, but I, I think the reason for that is, you know, you know, Bob was out there, uh, riding the bike, walking, pounding the pavement, uh, you know, stopping, talking with families in the park and at businesses and, and eating in the community. Um, going to, you know, contentious school board meetings, being there for the school district, uh, you know, at any time of the day. And, you know, I saw that with that group that we invited, uh, to be on the community panel. You know, they spoke so highly of, of the police department under Bob's leadership. And I, I just wanted to share one example, um, that one of the business owners shared is, you know, th- they're investing a lot of money in this community right now over at Beckham. And, uh, you know, I, I will keep the whole spiel, you know, to us, but, you know, there was a strong sense from the president over there that one of the key reasons they believe and they keep investing in Williamson is because we have a safe community with a, a really good police department. And, uh, it was nice that our candidates got to hear that from somebody that wasn't me or Bob. Um, and, and they got to see that and hear that from some folks that, you know, have invested a lot of their own energy and time in the community. And, and that really is a testament to Bob. Uh, and so it's, it's hard to say goodbye, uh, but he has done a tremendous job. And, you know, I think any, any leadership mantra would say, do you leave it better than you found it? And I, I have no doubt that Bob is leaving the department better than he found it. He, he absolutely has the respect of his staff. Um, that is completely clear. And, uh, you know, on a personal note, uh, I have looked up to Bob wi- working with him here. I know I'm the city manager, but anytime you're fortunate enough to work with somebody that's been doing this for 40 years, you know, you learn to listen and, and understand, uh, the perspective that they bring. And I think he's served in that role for a lot of our key department heads, uh, here is, you know, we, we all use him as a sounding board and he's got great instincts and wisdom. And so, you know, that institutional knowledge and all of that is, it's hard to lose. Um, but we are all very excited for, for Bob and his next steps and to see what he does from here. Um, and, and hope that he won't be a stranger. So with that, I just want to say thank you to Bob. And, uh, thank council for, you know, the support of the police department and, and this process that we just went through.
Thank you, Corey. So without further ado, Chief, it's your last time to give us department report. I hope you don't say, I have nothing to report.
Well, no, no. Give you a longer report than I ever have yet. And you caught me off guard. I didn't see the, uh, agenda item at, at the beginning about, uh, that. And so, um, but thank you. You are all so gracious. Now, the Williamson Police Department is like way bigger than just me. I couldn't do it without the people we have. I couldn't do it without the great people in this community that we have. Whether it's all of our service groups that support us, whether it's our school crossing guards that go do this stuff in this ungodly weather. And, and so it's great. Give Jimmy a chance. It, it took me a while to get my feet on the ground, to get to know everybody. It would take him a while too during this pandemic. And, and so, um, but I'm not going to go away. Some of the highlights of, of what I remember is, um, Jubilee, National Night Out and, um, riding a bicycle. And so I can still do all those things, even though I'm not chief, although I won't wear a yellow shirt. And, and, um, I don't plan on going away. So just thank you, um, for all your gracious comments. Um, uh, you've been a great council. Corey's been a great boss. But most importantly, it's the community support that has made this happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, it looks like we, um, had a treasurer's report on here. So I believe that's in the packet. Uh, Rachel Owens, uh, puts together great memos for us. So if you do have questions regarding that, please reach out to Rachel. Uh, do we have any, uh, council members that would like to report on, uh, your boards that you sit on at this time? Raise your hand if you do. All right. Moving forward, uh, Holly, did we have any audience join us?
Uh, no, we did not.
All right. Uh, then I will go ahead and I'll go around the board for council member comments. And then I'm going to start with Noah up top.
Hey, Chief, I just want to say thank you and again for supporting the Kiwanis and Terry and the Boy Scouts and, and all the community, um, groups. Uh, it's been an honor working with you over these years. And I think you should apply for a reserve position. We always have a door open for you. So, so again, congratulations. Thanks for your service.
Thanks, Noel.
Uh, Dan Rhines.
Um, I just want to echo what everybody else has said so far. You've just done an amazing job with your time here in the community, Chief, and specifically, uh, helping out with Jubilee with any questions we've had, always being willing to, uh, to come down and help out and check things out and not even just with Jubilee, but anytime, uh, need to give you a call, ask you about anything, always there, open door. And you, you've had a, had a great impact on, on me and this community and just, uh, uh, thanks for being you. You're a, you're a great individual and you've been a great police chief and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Uh, Gene Smith.
Oh, man. Well, you know, like we, we keep saying, oh, Chief's leaving it better than, than he found it. Um, I've seen the Williamson Police Department in many different states over the last 25 years. Um, he is leaving us the best police department we've ever had. And there's nothing else I can say. So thank you.
Tom, Pratt.
Uh, uh, just Gene, thanks. That, that means a lot. I've been a long time. So thank you.
Um, I'd like to reiterate what some of the others have said. Uh, Chief, you have definitely been an asset to this community. Uh, it reminds me of, uh, must've been about a year on the force. We were at a structured fire that you were at. And, uh, Chief Segal from the fire department asked you, uh, how you were liking it here so far. And I remember you telling him, well, I've, I've already made it a year and they haven't kicked me out. The rest is just icing on the cake. So 11 years later, um, you know, we've progressed. I know a bunch of the, um, officers that have worked underneath of you, uh, have really looked up and respected you. You, you've, you've really, uh, done a number for this town in a great way. So thank you for your time here. We appreciate it. And also welcome Brandon to city council.
Thank you very much, Tom. Uh, Jeff Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so Bob, uh, I started reserve as a reserve officer in Williamson in 1988. Uh, fresh out of high school, it was a part-time police officer at the department. And, uh, worked for Chief LeClaire. And, uh, what Gene says, what everyone else says, I echo it. And, and you have indeed, uh, brought the Williamson Police Department from, uh, up here already. The, a lot higher. So, but what the story is that you probably didn't tell people was a few years back, I happened to be in town and, uh, spotted an armed robbery vehicle at the main Four Corners. And, uh, that was involved in armed robbery at the, the pharmacy in Weverville the day before. They happened to appear in front of me. I followed out, uh, east of Raleigh Road, east of M52 by about two miles, where Officer Stonebrook and, uh, caught up to me and we made a felony stop. And Bob heard about it on his radio. And here comes Bob on his bike. Now, we're on, um, uh, Raleigh Road, east of M52. Oh, that's probably eight, nine miles. So I offered to give, give the chief a ride back, put his bike in the back of my, uh, Tahoe and give him a ride back. He'd have none of it. He rode his bike all the way back into town. So that's the kind of chief he is that leads by example. So well done, Chief. Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Jeff. And what I want to remind everybody is in our lobby at the police department, we have pictures of the young Gene, the young Jeff. And the history of the Williams Police Department is in the lobby. So I'd encourage people to stop and, and take a look at that.
Well, I already cried, Chief, so I'm not going to do that. Um, I want to thank you for everything you've given this community. Your leadership, your time, your talents, your love, and the opportunity that you've given the reserves. Um, you know, not a lot of communities have a reserve officer program. And I know that ours has been very long-lasting, but you've really encouraged it. You've worked well with them. You've made them feel a part of that department, even though they volunteer their time. They put on that blue and that vest and put their life on the line, just like those sworn officers do. And so that speaks volumes to your leadership and, and, and making that happen here. Um, Jim has big shoes to fill. Um, but I know he'll do it because, um, he's had good mentors. Um, and, uh, and I just want to say thank you. And just remember that, um, what it says on that water tower, welcome home. This will always be your home. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the reserves were a new thing for me, coming from the state police. We just job without them. And they too have come a long ways. The leadership within the reserves, not me, but Bob Thompson, Jody, uh, Gene, uh, all the officers on it really taking the reserves to a different level as well. So, um, thank you all.
All right. So we have seven days left with you. Um, I hope that those seven days are, you know, you knock it out of the park a couple more times. And, uh, we'll, uh, look forward to having Jim join us on February 1st. I do want to remind everybody out in the community that we do have a sto- snowstorm upon us. So, um, now more than ever, we need to remember that there is no street parking from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM so that our DPW crew can get out there to clean the streets, keep them safe for us. And I just want to thank all of my council members. I'm so excited that we have a full council member, uh, full council team now. Thank you, Brandon, for being here this evening and, and, and sticking around for the whole council session so that you can see what we do. Uh, look forward to having you with us, um, in February for your first council meeting. And I just want to, you know, um, say thank you for, to Corey and the staff for doing such a great job, um, through the interview process, uh, getting that, um, to where we are. Um, that really speaks testaments because, um, that's in addition to everything else they do, uh, um, during their daily activities of running this, running the city. So thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and call to adjourn the meeting at 8:06 this evening. Thank you all so much.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Good evening. Drive safe.
Yep. Bye, everybody.